Welcome, everybody. I'm Barbara Nichol. I'm president of the League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area. The League of Women Voters began in 1920 after women first got the right to vote. The League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area, under a different name, began in the mid-1930s. So we're a very old organization. We are nonpartisan, which means we never support candidates and we never support parties. Our goal is really to encourage people to vote. We want everyone to vote. We have lots of strategies for doing it. The other thing we like to do is educate voters, and that's what we're about tonight. We want voters in District 4 to know as much as they can about the candidates they'll be voting for. So with that, I'm going to begin, and I'm going to ask Chara to give her opening statement.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barbara and Rachel, Ms. Gina, and everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with the League. I am, number one, a community member that is working to build and raise her family and do business here in the city of Pomona, the city that I love. I am running to represent the district, excuse me, I'm running to represent the District, District 4, for various reasons, many of which are things of just making sure that everyone's voice is counted. You make a mention of advocacy for voters' rights, advocacy for all of our community members, and really finding that equity in the City Hall. And I have always been that person, the last 20 years volunteering, volunteering these last 20 years in majority of my community engagement roles. That is what I've been about. I've been about advocacy. It's been about finding everyone's voice and not just going there to hear and talk to people, but really listen and find actionable items, milestones, and solution-driven. That is my absolute, when it comes to making sure that our community is thriving. I appreciate the opportunity to share with everyone and kind of put into words the actions that have already been done over the last 20 years and really fight to represent our entire community, District 4, from Gary to Mills, San Bernardino, Indian Hill, and Pomona as a whole. I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chara. Elizabeth, your opening statement, please. Please unmute you. Wait, Elizabeth, you're not unmuted.
There you go. There, okay. Thank you very much for inviting me to this forum and to be able to introduce myself. I am a 25-year nurse that had worked with Pomona Unified School District, and I have met many, many families through that realm of my profession. I am running again for third term. I ran in 2016. I had the victory over a 25-year incumbent, which I'm very proud of. I ran in 2020 and succeeded very well with that campaign as well. I'm running again because there are still more things to be done in the city of Pomona that I have been focusing on for quite some time. And let me say that when you have a vision for your hometown that was born and raised here, went to school here, have properties here, raised my family here, there are so many things that I have looked at over the years, and this is a continuation of what I want to do for the city of Pomona. When I have such strong ties to a city that has been affected by many, many things, including human trafficking, homelessness, and unaffordable housing, we have a problem. So I am extending my vision, and hopefully I will succeed in my campaign. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Guillermo, your opening statement, please.
Thank you very much for inviting me to participate in this forum. My name is Guillermo Gonzalez. I am running for Pomona City Council, District 4. I grew up in East Los Angeles in a working-class family. I was the first in my family to go to college. I attended UC Davis, where I earned a bachelor's degree in political science. I later went to Cal State LA for grad school, where I earned a Master of Science in Public Administration. I am currently a Human Resources Executive in the private sector. I'm running because I believe we need new leadership in the city. I think that with my unique experience, I can bring a different perspective to the City Council. I have been an elected union representative. I have worked in government, and it's this experience that I'm going to draw from that I think would make me effective. It would allow me to leverage that experience, and I'm looking forward to this conversation with the other candidates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Guillermo. So the first question I will ask of Elizabeth, and then I'll ask all of you the same question, but Elizabeth will go first. Elizabeth, what issues do you feel are unique to District 4? And how would you go about to address them?
Well, I think we all know very well that we're facing a situation with homelessness in the city of Pomona. We have been striving way before we became a regional city, where we have the Hope for Home Center, which is now a regional center for the homelessness. This was something that was created, and it has done very well with the homeless situation. People are not aware of what has been accomplished through this organization with Volunteers of America. We are also facing a very critical situation with the human trafficking. But we must be very, very open about this particular situation because we have had started in a wonderful, wonderful beginning. I'm on the ad hoc committee with various people. But when we have SB 357 law that is preventing us from moving forward, we have a problem. This was signed in August the 1st, 2022. So I'm hoping that we can work more with the Senate, with the Assemblypeople in order to maybe amend this law so we can have more enforcement in this particular area.
Thank you. Guillermo, same question. Would you like me to repeat the question? What issues do you feel are unique to District 4, and how would you address them?
Well, the things that are unique to District 4 are actually things that impact the city as a whole. There's no question that we need to focus on economic development. The city is relying on measured PG funds to balance the budget. They have created a structural deficit. When PG funds disappear, the city will be in deficit. And so one of the things that we can do to address the human trafficking on Holt is to work on economic development. The city of Pasadena, some years ago, in the Old Town Core, had a situation before they developed it that was similar to what's happening on Holt. What we need to have in Pomona is the vision to see that we can make this change, that we can build our way out of this problem and reduce or eliminate almost entirely the crime that's happening daily, the human trafficking that's happening daily on Holt. The other things that are facing the city are affordable housing. We know that that is a statewide issue. I don't believe that rent control, the Rent Stabilization Ordinance that the city passed is the right way to go. There are other options that we can employ. We know the data tells us that rent control does not work over the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Chara, same question to you. Shall I repeat the question?
Issues unique to District 4? Thank you very much. So we all, I believe we all agree, all of the candidates agree, that human trafficking, homelessness are huge blights in our district. They are immediate towards our public safety in the streets, the things that our children see on a regular basis, the activities that go on day-to-day. District 4, I think, is very unique in this area in that, we were just speaking about it recently, how our section, Holt and Clark, that is a world-renowned area specifically for human trafficking, pimping, prostitution. That is something that is continual. That is not necessarily something that you see in the other districts. Building up our businesses really equitably and equitably, what's the word? Empowering our community, our business owners, really showing what we actually can do together. That's a big part of the solution that we are facing everywhere we go. That is what we're seeing. That is what is being promoted on the news and over and over. So we do need to work on that. That's really a critical, critical issue.
Thank you very much. Question two. Guillermo, you'll begin this question, and it is: What is your top priority for Pomona? And what are two concrete steps that you can take as a City Council member to address that priority?
Sorry, I thought you were going to unmute me again. Sorry, I was waiting for that. I apologize. Well, I kind of already touched on it, but for me, economic development is number one. There's no question that that has to take priority over everything else because if we can't generate tax revenue, we can't address any of the myriad of issues that the city is facing. So one of the things that we need to do on economic development is partner with our landowners along the Holt corridor, convince them to adopt a Business Improvement District. We need to have a champion for the city, for that area, so that we can bring in businesses once we develop it. And those are the things that we're currently not doing. With the PG funds, the city has not taken that and invested it into that, into the Holt corridor. They haven't done enough to promote economic development. They haven't increased the Economic Development Director's budget sufficiently. And so those are the two things that I would do almost immediately when elected to address economic development in the city.
Thank you. Chara, you're next. What is your top priority for Pomona? And what two concrete steps can you take as a City Council member to address that priority?
What I've learned over, you know, several years of advocating in the community, and, you know, not just kind of that platform of community changes everything, but it truly does. And what I've learned is that there are experts within our city. You know, I sit on this panel right now with experts in their fields. And with that, there is an engagement that we need with our community that will help to address the issues that we see every day. Business support is such a huge issue. Our public safety are huge issues. Those are, I would say, priorities. But engaging our community in all of that is critical to be able to find the solutions, be able to connect the dots, to be able to use the resources that we already have in our community, find the resources within the region, including the state, building the relationships throughout. So the business development, the business support that is needed so that we can see those funds along Holt and Indian Hill and all throughout the district, as well as all of Pomona, that's necessary. But also, it just takes really talking, really pulling all of the ideas together and connecting those dots.
Thank you. Elizabeth, same question to you. What is your top priority for Pomona? And what are two concrete steps you can take as a City Council member to address that priority?
Basically, this is what my vision has been for the last eight years, to promote business in the city of Pomona. I have very close contact with business, people that are in all of my corridors. I have brought 35 mini businesses, along with Aldi's, which will be opening up on Indian Hill and San Bernardino Road. This is a very crucial step. It is not easy to bring business into the city of Pomona. I discovered this as a councilperson these last eight years. First of all, we got to be business-friendly. We have to be able to create a partnership with people who want to come in to the city of Pomona and develop business. I understand that it is a very important step to bring confidence and support to our developers. Our developers will go somewhere else if we don't treat them the way they should be treated, and I mean increasing impact fees and things of that nature. The more we work with our developers, the more we can create business. Our revenues will go up. I have brought in, well, transferred over AutoZone from a 6,000 square foot to a 12,000 square foot, which allows more. It's the 16th mega hub in the United States, which I'm very proud of. And we have opportunities there. We need jobs, and if you have anything in this area, we must have jobs for our citizens.
Thank you. Question three. I'm going to start the question three with Chara. Chara, here is the question. Pomona is in its first year of a 10-year contract with Athens Services for Waste Disposal. What is your opinion of how the contract is being handled? And did the city make the right choice?
Oh, didn't realize I was already unmuted. Thank you. So I don't necessarily believe the correct choice would have been to single out an individual facility, I'm sorry, to facilitate all of the trash. I think some of the contract does need to be looked at, especially when we're looking at our business support. I think there could have and should have been more kind of eyes and document digging in the contract. One of the things that is a little off-putting, I believe, is, you know, we've had several contracts, and although it's helpful to have one entity that can take care of everything, there might tend to be a lax in-service. I would hope that that is not the case. I would hope that we would continue to inspect what you expect based on that contract. However, I don't want to necessarily say the word monopoly, but you don't, there's nothing to compare to. So I think it really does need to be reevaluated, especially on an annual, to be able to look at this contract on an annual or three-year term regularly. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, you're next for this question. Do you want me to repeat it?
Yeah, please do.
Pomona is in its first year of a 10-year contract with Athens Services for Waste Disposal. What is your opinion of how the contract is being handled? And did the city make the right choice?
At the present time, I believe it did. I feel that Athens has had quite a bit of experience. It's a very old trash service that has been around for many, many years. We went ahead on a 10-year contract. We had multiple meetings for everybody to go to. We invited them. We were present at these meetings. They were held in community centers. I know that there has been an increase, but it was going to be an increase regardless of who took the contract. There was also a law that became into effect regardless. It was going to increase our rates, and this is what people do not understand. I know Athens has taken quite a few punches, but I think had it been Waste Management, Valley Vista, any of these, I think they probably would have faced the same problem. I personally wanted a two-year contract. I'll tell you that right now. I wanted to see how well that they would perform. I keep very close contact with the supervisors, and if there's any problems at all, I immediately call. If somebody calls me regarding something that's going on in the District 4, I will immediately call the supervisors where I have close contact phone numbers. So, you know, we have to give these people a chance. If anything changes, you know, contracts are made to be amended. So this is something that we all have to basically live with at this point.
Thank you. Guillermo. Pomona is in its first year of a 10-year contract with Athens Services for Waste Disposal. What is your opinion of how this contract is being handled? And did the city make the right choice?
You know, one of the things that we hear frequently about the change to Athens is that the fees are higher, the communication is poor, and these are problems that we have right now. This was a 10-year contract, and given that we were changing over to new service, I don't know if that was a great idea. But the other thing that hasn't been mentioned is that this contract has an extension for another 10 years. So effectively, this could end up being a 20-year contract. I find that to be unconscionable. There was a comment that there were some meetings. The truth is that the city doesn't do enough on transparency. It doesn't do enough to promote meetings. When you have meetings in the middle of the day, nobody can attend. These are problems. These are problems that we consistently have in the city, and it's frustrating. It's frustrating that we're not doing enough to communicate to residents, to give residents a real opportunity to participate in governance. And these are the things that frustrate me, and this is a part of this contract that I find totally unacceptable.
Thank you. Elizabeth, I'm going to start question four with you. Homelessness has continued to increase year over year. How do you propose to meaningfully address the situation?
Well, I have been addressing the situation since I live one block north of the corridor of East Holt. I am very familiar with what is going on. I work very closely with the HART team. The HART team is a specialized group that goes 24/7 into the streets of the city of Pomona. I have the highest area for homelessness because we are so close to the corridor. But we also have the Hope for Home, like I mentioned. I think that has been one of the best solutions for our homelessness. It doesn't just, you know, doesn't take them in there and feed them, and that's it. We have resources. We have Tri-City, which I'm also on the board, Tri-City Mental Health, because the majority, I would say up to 40% now, is the people are suffering from some type of mental illness, and they self-medicate. I'm a nurse, so I have worked with psych, and they do self-medicate in order to keep themselves above board. But the homeless issue is being worked on, and we do have an area right now on Mission, and it's one of the hotels, for a one-year contract, where if you see, there's less homeless people right now because they are being in this particular area where they can sleep, shower, and eat properly.
Thank you. Guillermo, same question. Homelessness has continued to increase year over year. Wait, sorry. Guillermo, homelessness has continued to increase year over year. How do you propose to meaningfully address the situation?
So in LA County, Care Court came online on December 1st. When Care Court came online in other cities in LA County, they had a list of people that they could refer. I don't know that Pomona did anything. And this is my problem with the leadership right now, is that we have these opportunities to deal effectively with our unhoused population, and we do nothing. We know that upwards of 75% of the unhoused population suffers from mental health issues. This is exactly why Care Court was written, to address this situation. And the fact that we're not doing these referrals, that we're not referring people right now, is unconscionable. We're not taking advantage of the very program that's intended to help cities deal with their unhoused population. Instead, we're shipping them in from around, from Claremont, from Laverne, and putting the burden of that on Pomona taxpayers. We just can't keep doing that. We cannot be the provider of the unhoused for our neighbors who refuse to take responsibility for their unhoused population.
Thank you. Chara, same question. Homelessness has continued to increase year over year. How do you propose to meaningfully address the situation?
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Our homelessness situation and dealing with our unhoused, we've talked about this several times, is definitely something that needs to be looked at from a multi-faceted approach. I'm just thinking right now, in the last few years, being able to connect our families that were homeless, living in a motel, living in a hotel, living in their cars, being able to directly connect these families and finding that many of them were Pomona Unified students. So finding the neighborhood services and connecting them with pupil services and starting that dialogue, a dialogue where we have two programs, two different programs, being able to reach them, but the two entities were not talking to each other. So you have 3,000 homeless students not talking to each other, the programs themselves. Directing our current resources, connecting those current resources with the individuals that need them, connecting those organizations, and making sure that everyone is actually taken care of, whether it's mental health, drug addiction, job placement, a roof over their head. That's where we're going to see a huge change. That's where we're going to see that homelessness count go further down.
Thank you. Question five, I'm going to start with Guillermo. Question five is: How do you intend to connect with and serve marginalized communities within Pomona?
You know, one of the things that happens when you don't feel like you have a connection with government is you draw away, you withdraw even further. What the city needs to do better is that outreach, is to connect with marginalized communities, and not just marginalized communities, with everybody, I might add. We need to be where they are. They don't need to be where the city is. And that's one of the things that I want to work on as a council member, is making sure that we have meetings that are accessible to people at the times that they are available, not necessarily always at 5:30 on a Wednesday evening, not at 6 o'clock on a Tuesday night, but 10 o'clock on a Saturday morning, right? 1 o'clock on a Saturday afternoon. We have to be there for them when they're available and make sure that we're connecting with them, letting them know about city services, letting them know about what the city can do for them, and making it at times when they can actually access those services.
Thank you. Chara, same question. How do you intend to connect with and serve marginalized communities within Pomona?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, the plan is to continue the work that has already been done on a regular basis for, again, the last, um, let's just say the last three years even specifically in, you know, since pandemic. COVID really took off a Band-Aid and opened up this gaping hole of resources and connectivity that was not to areas that really needed the resource. Engagement, outreach, that is, that's my strong suit. Finding ways that make equitable access to the resources that we have. When you have a survey and 100 people fill it out, that's less than point 101% of our population. That's not getting a true idea of the community that we serve. So going to spaces, translation, um, timings of meetings, access as to where they're located, whether it's resource centers, um, equitable access in City Hall. Those are all areas, ways that we can connect to these communities that are on the margins, are marginalized communities.
Thank you. Elizabeth, same question to you. How do you intend to connect with and serve marginalized communities with, within Pomona?
We have always been connecting with marginalized communities. We have been, um, recognized as the compassionate city. We are, Pomona, California is a compassionate city. We welcome everybody. We have a wonderful pride center here in the city. We help indigenous people. We are continually, continually helping the, uh, lower economic, uh, uh, group of people who have been, um, without homes, without any kind of, um, food-related, uh, situations. We have God's Pantry. We have Pomona Valley Food Bank. We work in helping these people. I worked as a nurse for 25 years in this, in the Pomona Unified School District. I worked with homeless children. I drove them home. I made sure that they were safe. Um, we have always continued, uh, and what we need to do is step up more because as the city grows, we will face, additional people who need help, people that are coming from different areas, bringing up the homeless, getting them housing. This is what we have. We have community service which, um, actually, um, finds housing for our, for our people that are in need. And we continue to do this. We even have, um, you know, uh, the, the police that also does their, their part in homeless.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, question six, I'm going to start, uh, with you, Chara. And question six is how do you intend to improve Pomona's environmental footprint?
Thank you. Um, a big part of, of, you know, kind of just being engaged in the community is also making sure that we have walkable spaces. We have, um, we have areas that are utilized on a regular basis. The environmental footprint, I think, has to do with our bus system, you know, making sure that we have a, our transit stations, our tram, the, the schedules and whatnot, uh, of our stations or bus stations, please excuse me, are equitable to all of our residents, um, building up our parks areas, making sure that our green spaces are usable. A lot of times we are hopping in our cars and heading out of the city. I know I, I keep, I stay here. But we have to make these spaces clean them. You know, this is all kind of going all the way back to the area, the unique situations in District Four. But making these safe spaces to where our families are using them on a regular basis and not going up and out. That's all part of activating green spaces, activating, um, adding the usability of our streets, the walkability of our streets, being able to connect from one area of Pomona to the, to the next easily.
Thank you. Elizabeth, same question to you. How do you intend to improve Pomona's environmental footprint?
Well, this has always been my, my hometown. Um, I have great appreciation for our parks. We have a beautiful park, Inisha Hills, that's been around since the 1800s. Garfield Park, which is in my district, which I have planted trees, Lincoln Park in, um, my district, which I have planted trees, Mott View, which I have planted trees. I have planted, um, not just in the park, but I, I have planted for my neighbors at least four or 500 trees now in my eight years. Uh, I think we need to, uh, keep our green spaces, well, well-kept. I think this is one of the main things. We need to bring back our parks, continue with, with adding more environmental beauty and those are parks, uh, trees. Okay? Trees are very important. They clean the air. They, um, they, they, they have, um, uh, homes for tree, uh, for birds and everything. Uh, this is a very important part of our city. We have always been known basically as a garden way back many, many years ago. And this is what we need to do. We, we need to take care of our water resources and we just need to continue, um, uh, getting funding from the state to create. Like we have had much, much funding for bringing trees in. Uh, cleaning green has been a, a great part of this.
Thank you. Guillermo, same question. How do you intend to improve Pomona's environmental footprint?
You know, one of the main ways that we can, um, improve our, our environmental footprint is by creating walkable communities. And when we think of the new builds that are going on in the city, uh, one of the short-sighted decisions that the city continues to make is that we don't build mixed use. There is a project going up on the corner of Town and Bonita. It's about a 200 and 250 unit project. That project, when everybody's moved in, right? There's no mixed use. So when everybody's moved in and they want to go eat on a Wednesday night, they're going to drive down Bonita into the Claremont Village and have dinner there. Instead of walking downstairs to the first floor of that complex and buying something to eat. When we continually create buildings that forces people to drive, we're not going to improve our environmental footprint. We're going to make it worse. There was a mention about parks. I, I, I think that we need to build more parks, more park space. I know that the city just, uh, recently updated their Parks Master Plan because on a per capita basis, our park, uh, space was smaller than, uh, comparable cities and cities nearby. So we need to continue to focus on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to start question seven, uh, which is our last question, uh, with Guillermo. Guillermo, as more and more issues such as housing, transportation and the environment require regional solutions, how will you approach working with other governmental agencies to meet Pomona's needs?
You know, I, 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 I really wish that we could work better with some of our elected officials, uh, and, and our federal elected officials. I know we've had a pretty productive relationship with our state officials. But I, I think that one of the things that we need to do as a city is, uh, is put aside some of the conflict that we've had in the past and work towards, um, some common goals. We all love this city. We all want to work to make it better and we can't, we shouldn't necessarily want to put, uh, our names on everything. You know, we need, we need to at some point just, uh, work towards the solution as opposed to being, having our name on the marquee and saying, I, I did this. I brought this to the city. So that's one of the things that I'll work on and focus on is ensuring that we get the resources we need as a city, but not really focusing too much on making sure that I get the credit for it. Cause I don't care about the credit. I care about what the city looks like.
Thank you. Uh, Chara, same question. As more and more issues such as housing, transportation and the environment require regional solutions, how will you approach working with other government agencies to meet Pomona's needs?
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Um, I know I've said it a few times in this conversation, um, but the connecting the dots, the connectivity between our elected fish, officials, between our civil, city government, um, as far as like staffing is concerned. You know, as a council member, our job is to connect those dots. Our job is to build those relationships regionally with the cities next to us, state leaders as well. Um, and then also our city staff and our community. I know over the last several years, Pomona has finally been at the table. Whereas there were several years where we just, we were in oversight. Pomona was on the other side of the hill, LA County, kind of the, the stepchild of LA County. And we did not get the resources. We were not sitting a seat at the table. It's imperative that we stay in that communication. It's imperative that we make sure that the community that we serve are represented at these seats in these rooms. Again, it's building relationships, um, and thinking creatively towards the sustainability of our city, long-term solutions, but it, it requires us being there. It requires us speaking up on behalf of our community, on behalf of what we need in Pomona.
Thank you. Elizabeth, uh, same question to you. As more and more issues such as housing, transportation and the environment require regional solutions, how will you approach working with other governmental agencies to meet Pomona's needs?
Well, this is what we're doing now. Um, we have a wonderful staff in the city of Pomona. Uh, Public Works, um, uh, has, um, has applied for so many wonderful grants. We just were awarded a $4.92 million grant. It's called CalTran Clean California. This grant was a $4.92 million, which as it has started, it started in, in the summertime. You, you see a new improvement on, um, East Hold Avenue, which has been long overdue. We applied over multiple cities and we got this grant. Now you see street improvement. Now you see, um, uh, trash cans that were needed to keep our city cleaner. We now have a medium that is being built right now, which I added an additional $2 million bond that I kept in reserve for something really important that we needed. And now we will have street, uh, streets lined with trees, um, jacarandas, um, um, crepe myrtles. And it, it's going to create a beautiful environment. We have federal grants that Congresswoman, um, Norma Torres has, um, invited us to apply. It is up to the city. I, you know, and I encourage my staff to apply for these grants. There, there are, uh, grants that we can have and create a better Pomona.
Thank you. Um, it's time for closing statements and I'm going to ask closing statements to start with Chara. You have two minutes.
I love that you keep starting with me. Excuse me. I am, I, I love this community and I am a community member. I've always been a, an advocate for our community. Whatever the community that kind of looks like, um, that community could be our neighbors. That community could be the school that, you know, that we serve, um, the parents and whatnot. Community, like I said, is not just a coined term. Community really does change everything. It takes us building relationships and building the community, um, those community connections for us to be able to serve the city, building those connections with our city staff, having a trusted, that trusted relationship, the trusted relationship regionally and to the state, again, to our neighbors. I've said it numerous times, connecting those dots. It's integral for us to do that, to build the trust again in, with our businesses, those that have been here for years and years and years, but also being able to bring in new business and business that supports us. Business where we can go right down the street and be able to, you know, go to the grocery store, take care of all of our needs right here in Pomona. So we retain those tax dollars. Like I said, community is such a huge part of who I am, um, period. But it remains, um, it remains a driving point in my everyday service. And I really do look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve my community, my community. But specifically as a council member for District Four.
Thank you. Uh, Elizabeth, your closing statement, two minutes.
Okay. Am I okay? Okay. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to have been here tonight to express how I feel about how I am serving the community, District Four and the city as a whole, being my hometown. I have such great respect and I'm, I, I feel honored to be able to serve my, my city. Uh, nothing gives me more of a wonderful feeling inside when I, when I can work with my community, when I can work with staff, when I can work with my neighbors in building a better Pomona. Uh, it, it's a, a fantastic feeling knowing that I have brought business into the city of Pomona with the help of many other people, reliable properties and all these other, uh, businesses that I have worked really closely with, AJ Pawn, Catalyst. Uh, I have been honored to work with business people, Baby Tacos, all of these businesses, from the littlest to the biggest, to be able to promote the business that the city needs. Yes, we need housing, but we need jobs. And when you create business, you create jobs. I want people in the city of Pomona to be able to live in Pomona, to maybe buy a home in Pomona and not just have rent, but to actually have a pride of owning a piece of Pomona and also working in the city of Pomona where they do not have to drive out into the freeways anymore. And if we partner together, we can do this. We have to have partnership. We have to be, uh, better in our business friendliness. This is the main thing that I hear from people that are trying to build a business in the city of Pomona. And I want to make that happen and I am making it happen now. And I, and I am very honored to keep continuing to be your District Four City Councilperson.
Thank you. Guillermo, your two-minute closing statement.
Thank you. First, I, I wanted to thank Elizabeth and Chara. I know that they love this city as much as I do and, and that's why they're running because they believe that they can make this community a better place. And that's why we're all running because we all have different visions for what we want to accomplish, but our goal is the same, which is to make this a better place to live. About 15 years ago, I drove out from LA during, um, during the, right before the Great Recession, we were looking for a home and we drove through Pomona and we immediately fell in love with this, with this town. We came here, we invested in the community, we bought a home. And for me, that is a big deal. That's a big step. Our fortune is tied to this city. And we chose to live here because we love it and we want to make it better. We, I want to work to ensure that this city can continue to be a regional hub at the economic engine of the entire East Los Angeles County. The gateway to the IE, I think Pomona can do that. And that's why I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I want to close our evening by thanking, um, all of our candidates. I think this is a, an excellent way of, uh, getting information out. We get a lot of, uh, people watching these videos on, on our Um, we get a lot of, uh, people watching these videos on, on our YouTube site and you will get the link, uh, in a day or so. So, uh, thank you for being here. Um, thank you also to Gina and Rachel for supporting the effort because it takes all of us to get this done. Um, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area, I thank everybody for being here.
Thank you. Good night.